Good evening and welcome to the annual town meeting of May 5, 2022. It's nice to be back inside again. We have approximately 135 people here so far, so that our quorum is 100. So I will call the meeting to order. Return of the warrant shows that this has been properly served. Please stand as you are able and join me in the pledge of allegiance and remain standing thereafter for a moment of silence for all those we have lost since our last time together and for all the people of Ukraine and of Ukrainian descent all over the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to introduce the people at the head table. On my right, Town Administrator Carolyn Brennan, Town Council Jeff Blake of KP Law, Finance Committee Chair Amy Fiden, Finance Committee Member Dylan Manns, Finance Committee Member Valerie Hood. On my left, Town Clerk Jessica Spanknable, Select Board Chair David Phil, Select Board Member Jane Nevin Smith, Joyce Chunglo, John Waschkevitz, and Amy Parsons. I'm Randy Eizer, the moderator. I'd like to thank Hadley Media for everything they do for this meeting and every other meeting that they prepare us for in terms of sound system, putting it out on TV and Hadley Mothers Club is back in the back of the room for refreshments if you'd like to go visit them when you get a chance. And since they're here, they want me to make an announcement. Hadley Mothers Club is holding Candidates Night on Monday, May 9, at 7:00 p.m. It will be broadcast on Hadley Media Channel 192 and Charter Cable on YouTube. It'll be rebroadcast multiple times up to the date of the election, and they have a bin in the back if you want to submit questions for the candidates for Candidates Night. And I have one more announcement. The Friends of the Library and the Council on Aging are having a joint open house this Saturday, May 7, from 10 to 2:00. Music, games, and lectures at the Senior Center, book bake and plant sale at the library. Lunch is available at the Senior Center. This is a wonderful time for you to visit our new buildings, especially if you haven't been to them yet. Before we get into the articles, the Select Board has a couple of things they'd like to do. First one is to dedicate the annual report. And who do we have to? Okay, Amy Parsons?
The annual report of 2021 is dedicated to Janine Giles. Tom Giles is here with us. If you would just take a moment to stand up so that we can recognize your wife. Janine has been an active member of the Hadley community since she was a cheerleader at Hopkins Academy. Janine and Tom purchased the Hadley Garden Center in 1988 and sold the garden center after 32 years of success and supporting the community through their generosity. Janine served on multiple committees as a member of the First Congregational Church of Hadley. She was also a member of the Board of Trustees of Hopkins Academy. Anytime Janine was asked to donate for a community fundraiser, she was always very generous with both her time and contributions, including the wonderful wreaths that decorated Town Hall every December. Janine was a valued member of our community, and we thank her for her contributions.
All right. Joyce, are you going to do a second dedication?
My pleasure this evening to honor John Kerish. I have to give a little history for myself because when I was first elected to school committee, it was 34 years ago. And that was the first year that I marched in the parade, and that was my first encounter with John Kerish. And it's been 34 years minus this one that I have marched with John every year and participated with the parade, and he just did a wonderful job. And I just want to honor that I am able to read this tonight. John Kerish was an active member of the Hadley community for many years, serving proudly as the commander of the American Legion Post 271, proclaiming that all Hadley was the asparagus capital of the world and hand-delivering his calendars from Kerish Oil every year to their customers. John made a special effort to ensure that all who served their country would receive an honorable and proper burial. He loved participating in our Memorial Day Parade, eventually helping to coordinate the parade and ensuring that our town and neighboring towns knew when to come and enjoy the show. Every year, John looked forward to leading the Ragshag Parade. Also, John was an active member of the Most Holy Redeemer Church, serving as collector, bingo caller, and volunteered his time to the Three County Fair church booth. He also was an enthusiastic athletic supporter of Hopkins Academy, especially when his children and grandkids were playing. He always said that he didn't like travel because there was no place better on earth than the Pioneer Valley. John was a valued member of the community, and we thank him for all of his contributions.
The W. Fred Oakley Award was established by the Select Board to honor members of the community who embody the spirit of volunteerism and service to the town of Hadley. The 2022 recipient of the award is Jean Baxter. In Hadley, when you say volunteer, Jean Baxter probably comes to mind. Over the last few decades, she has volunteered her time selflessly to the town of Hadley, serving as Girl Scout leader, PTO president, church committee member, and the parade lady of our Memorial Day Parade. Jean Baxter, in her role as Girl Scout leader, helped Hadley become the largest service unit in Western Massachusetts. She recently was awarded the Evergreen Award for a lifetime of service for the Girl Scouts for her help in supporting and training leaders and enriching programming for the troops. Jean helped initiate the annual townwide Court of Awards ceremony for our Hadley Girl Scouts of all ages, trained our local leaders, and coordinated regional events. At the council level, she serves as a trainer and serves on the Gold Award Committee. She joined the parent-teacher organization, serving as a president for many years, and was instrumental in having the PTO become incorporated as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit designation. Jean was also very active in the North Hadley Congregational Church, serving for many years as the Director of Christian Education. She served in governance as an officer and on many church committees. She is now the Director of Christian Education at First Congregational Church Hadley. She is now the Director of Christian Education at First Congregational Church Hadley. Jean Baxter is also our parade lady for the American Legion Memorial Day Parade as the co-organizer and mastermind behind the parade since 2002. She helped all of the town's organizations who participated in the parade and worked with the town to ensure a wonderful Memorial Day Parade for years. Jean, we thank you for your community-driven service to the town of Hadley. You're a wonderful example to others. And Jean, right up front here.
All right, that's a good way to start things off. Now I'm going to go over the rules of decorum for the meeting, everybody's favorite part, I'm sure. The meeting will be conducted according to Town Meeting Time Rules. If you wish to speak to an article, please come to THE microphone. We only have one this evening. And wait to be recognized by the moderator. Behind the microphone is a box of sanitizing wipes. If you feel the need to clean the microphone, please do. If you are wearing a mask, please remove it while speaking so that everyone can understand you better. State your name and residential address each time you have been recognized to speak. Keep all comments relative to the article or motion at hand. Please respect each other. Do not refer to any previous speaker by name; use previous speaker instead. You may speak as many times as you feel is necessary, but please give others a chance to speak before returning to the microphone. If necessary, I will ask you to wait until others have had a chance to speak. Direct your comments to me, the moderator. Please limit your comments to three minutes or less. All amendments must be submitted in writing to the moderator as soon as the amendment is offered, and please silence all your electronic devices. Okay, we're going to get right into the articles now. Part yes?
Shel Horowitz, 16 Barstool Lane. Mr. Moderator, I came here with the understanding that there would be one side masked and one side not. I've had to move three times already, and I sat next to people. I asked them to put on a mask or to move to the other side. They refused. I would like your assistance in enforcing that rule, please.
Okay. So I'm sure everybody heard what was just said. This was set up, the meeting was set up so that we would have masks on one side, unmasked on the other. Out of respect for the people who feel comfortable wearing a mask, if you're not wearing a mask, please come over to this side. Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. Things a little different this evening because typically we have town election before town meeting. This year, we have town meeting and then town election. So Article 1 is just a notification about the town election. There's no motion required, no vote. It is just a notice. So on Tuesday, May 17, 2022, at the Hadley Senior Center at 46 Middle Street, there will be a town-wide election. Polls will be open from 9:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. And if you want to know what positions are open and being voted on, it's in the warrant. Okay, Article, no Article 2. The next item is the Consent Agenda. We have this every meeting, so I'll just explain what it is in case there's people here that don't know. Warrant articles on a consent agenda are exceptions to the general process of town meeting. The Select Board, moderator, and Finance Committee identify for town meeting consideration those articles that they believe should generate no controversy and can be properly voted without debate. These articles are put on the consent agenda to allow motions under these articles to be acted upon as one unit and to be passed without debate. At the call of the consent agenda, the moderator will read out the numbers of the articles one by one. If one or more voters object to any particular article being included in the consent agenda, they shall say "hold" in a loud voice when the number is called. The article will be removed automatically from the consent agenda and restored to its original place in the warrant to be debated and voted under the usual manner. After the calling of the individual items in the consent agenda, the moderator will ask for a motion that the voters pass all items remaining as a unit on one vote. Use of the consent agenda process makes the town meeting more efficient by speeding up the handling of non-controversial items. The consent agenda also includes the procedural motion to allow department heads to address town meeting from time to time for information. After the motion and the second are made, I will ask the town administrator to give a brief explanation of the articles in the consent agenda so that there's hopefully no confusion, but if you have questions, we can answer them at that time. So, Consent Agenda. Move that the town take Articles Number 2, 3, 4, 5, 10, 12, and 13 out of order and that they be passed by consent and further allow all officers, department heads, and agents of the town to address the town meeting on matters as may be informational. Do I have a motion? You have a motion and a second. Carolyn, please.
Good evening. Article 2, this allows the town to accept grants and gifts throughout the year without calling a town meeting for authorization. This is purely administrative. Article 3, Chapter 90, this is the Chapter 90 program. Presently, we average around $350,000 to $360,000. I'm sorry, that would be not enough. $350,000 annually from the state. This helps maintain our roads and bridges, and this gives the town authority to spend the money. Article 4, Short-Term Borrowing. This gives the treasurer the authority to borrow within the fiscal year in anticipation of funds if we don't have the cash available. This has not happened before, but it's a safeguard in case the town ever needed to. Article 5, The Water Treatment Plant Filtration, Membrane Reserve. This article helps protect the town's investment in the water treatment plant. This article transfers money into a targeted fund specifically for the purpose of replacing the filtration units at the end of their useful life. Each unit is expected to last about 10 years. This is an increase from last year. Last year was $26,000. It is now at $50,000. We've, this has been on the consent agenda for about three years, but after speaking with our interim director for DPW, the $26,000 is not enough. So that is going to be at $50,000. This is funded through the water reserves and has no impact on taxation. Article 10, Borrowing Adjustments and Capital Returns. These are projects that have been authorized at prior town meetings and are completed. Unspent monies are returned to their original source. Article 12, Community Preservation Act Committee. This includes $5,000 for administrative costs for the CPA and a set aside of 10% of CPA funds for three purposes that are required by law: open space preservation, historic preservation, and housing resources. Finally, Article 13 is CPA extensions. These projects need more time to complete, and this extends the sunset provisions on these projects.
Thank you, Carolyn. Does anybody have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next up is Article 6. And let's see, what is this? This is Prior Year Invoices. So, Move the Town Vote to Transfer From Available Funds As Printed In The Warrant $22,571.43 To Cover Associated Costs With The Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Or Take Any Action Relative There Too. Finance Committee Recommends 500. Select Board Recommends 500. This requires a 4/5 majority vote. Have a motion and a second. Carolyn, would you like to explain this, please?
These are the bills that come in after the end of the fiscal year. So after the closing of the books for fiscal year '21, these bills came in afterwards. I can identify what each of them are. GPI is an engineering service that DPW uses. That bill came in, was not paid in the fall. We had a transition with our DPW directors, and so that came in. And that was $396.21. Matthew Bender, we have legal books that we, they billed us late, and we have canceled that subscription, but they did bill us late for that. Mass Municipal Association Human Resources Boot Camp, that was for a training that was done with our former HR director, and that came in late as well. And KP Law for $20,480. This was due to the transition. There was during the transition where the former town administrator and myself were, he was leaving and I was starting. We had some email, going to the wrong emails, and some difficulty in processing, and we didn't know about it until after the year closed. So we do try to close the books quickly so that we can get our certified cash and we, technically, you know, municipal best practices, we shouldn't be paying these any later, and it should be, we need authorized at town meeting for prior year invoices.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor. Okay, thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 7 is the Omnibus Budget General Fund. Finance Committee recommends this 500, except for the Police and Ambulance Budget, and that was recommended for 10. Select Board recommends this 500. Move that $19,421,603 be appropriated as set forth in the Individual Budget Appropriations listed under the column Fiscal Year 23 Finance Committee Budget as described in Table A1 of the General Fund Budget in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget Voted 414 2022 as presented at the annual town meeting and incorporated by reference herein and as funding therefore to transfer from local revenue, funds raised via taxation, and any other available funds to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the total sum of $19,421,603 as estimated in Table A1. Have a motion and a second. I would ask for a motion to waive the reading of the budget line items. Okay, have a motion and a second to do that. So we're going to, I'm going to ask you to vote on the waiving of reading the line items. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Finance Committee wants to give a brief explanation of what's happening with the budget so that you don't think you're, you can have a chance to ask questions if you want to. So, Amy, please.
Okay, so I wanted to let you know that we are presenting a balanced budget tonight. I will give you a few of the notable increases in the budget this year. Notable increases are benefits, which include health, retirement, life insurance. Education was an increase, but it was very modest for the education, and that's considering they had gone either down or level funded the last few years. So they just asked for a very small increase. Very minimal general expenses increase, where increases, some of them were, were town staffing increases. We did give the town 2.5% COLA for everyone. There were some requests such as park and rec, a few extra hours, counts on aging, a part-time to replace Jane. Library had extra hours. Town Hall asked for clerical. We did have a request for public safety was a new lieutenant, an extra, another dispatch person, and fire was a, actually, I thought it was ambulance, paramedic, but then later someone clarified it was a firefighter that was promised previous, which I kind of misunderstood on that. But the recommendations that were, except for the police and fire, it was just not that these aren't, it had not, it was just those were the two large ones. Those were the two requests that were asked for. So I was the one that said the exception, but that was because I was trying to be cautious. $400,000 were using of ARPA money to balance the budget, so that was something that I was looking forward towards next year. Next year, we won't have that ARPA money, so I'm trying. ARPA money is money from the government that we were given. We were given the $1.5 million in ARPA money. We are using 400 of it to balance the budget this year. This money is money that is for lost revenues from COVID. So we are doing better in our revenues, so hopefully that will offset the $400,000, but I was just being very cautious. I don't want to go into next year with a budget where we're worried about funding it. So also, union negotiations hadn't hit yet, which all industries, you're seeing increases in salaries and pay. So we're still, that is an unknown factor for us going forward. The town doesn't ask, our departments don't ask for very much. They are excellent. They do a fabulous job. If it wasn't for balancing with this and some of the unknowns, it wouldn't even be a question. I think that they just do a great job. So if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Does anybody have any questions regarding the budget? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 8 is Sewer Water and Hadley Enterprise Fund budgets. This one is kind of lengthy and got some long, big numbers in it. Finance Committee recommends 500. Select Board recommends 500. Move that the sum of $888,070 as set forth in the column Fiscal Year 2023 Finance Committee Budget in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget Voted 41422 as presented at the annual town meeting and incorporating up to and including the sum of lines entitled Total Division Expense and Indirect Costs be appropriated to the fiscal year 2023 Waste Water Division Enterprise Fund account to be expended for the respective purposes set forth, with each item being considered a separate appropriation. And further, move that the sum of $1,086,509 as set for the, okay, that doesn't make any sense, as set for in the column, is it set forth? As set forth in the column Fiscal Year 2023 Finance Committee Budget in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget Voted 41422 as presented at the annual town meeting and incorporating up to and including the sum of lines entitled Total Division Expense and Indirect Costs be appropriated to the fiscal year 2023 Water Division to be expended for the respective purposes set forth, with each item being considered a separate appropriation. And further, move that the sum of $74,195 as set forth in the column Fiscal Year 2023 Finance Finance Committee Budget in the handout entitled Finance Committee Budget Voted 414-22 as presented at the annual town meeting and incorporating up to and including the sum of lines entitled Total Division Expense and Indirect Costs be appropriated to the fiscal year 2023 Hadley Media Enterprise Fund account to be expended for the respective purposes set forth, with each item being considered a separate appropriation and to fund said appropriation by user fees as shown in Table B1. I have a motion and a second. Who's going to speak to this? Dylan Mans?
All right. The Finance Committee is presenting a balanced enterprise fund. The enterprise fund is self-contained and it pays for itself through user fees. It is required to appropriate at each town meeting, and there is no impact on the taxes. Questions?
Anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Article 9 is a capital article. There are seven separate motions. This is, involves spending a lot of money. So we're gonna read each motion and act on it individually. All these motions require a two-thirds majority to pass. So, Motion 9A. Move the town appropriate $26,000 to purchase propane tanks for the water department and further appropriate $310,000 to paint the Mount Warner and Mount Holyoke water tanks, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended or any other authorization. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) as most recently amended. That the Water Commission is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the purchase and project. I have a motion and a second. Before I forget, Capital Planning recommends 400. Finance Committee recommends 500. Select Board recommends 500. Mr. Phil, will you speak to this, please?
All of these items are within our current tax levy, so there will not be a need for a ballot vote or a debt exclusion. First one, propane tanks for the DPW for the water department. Currently, we lease our tanks, which means that we have to buy propane from a particular vendor. Owning the tanks will allow us to save a dollar or more per gallon and be able to shop around in the market, so that's the reason for that. Mount Warner, Hoyoke Tanks, these are our drinking water supply tanks that are up on Mount Warner and up on the Hoyoke Range. They are in need of paint and just maintenance going forward. So those are those two articles.
Anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay. Article 9B, or Motion 9B. Move the town appropriate $75,000 to replace the roofs on pump station number 1, number 5, number 6, number 7, number 8, Mill Valley Road Pump Station and Appleby's Pump Station, and further appropriate $30,000 for upgrading the mission communication system, and that to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Sections 7 and 8 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended or any other authorization. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board determines that they should be, that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) as most recently amended. That the Sewer Commission is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Phil, please.
So we have nine sewage pumping stations in town that move our sewage down to the wastewater treatment plant. This is to replace the roofs on seven of those stations. They are original and will be replaced with standing seam metal roofs, so hopefully they'll last a lifetime. The mission communications item that's listed here is what those pumping stations use to communicate with the wastewater treatment staff. So if there's a pump malfunction, some kind of overflowing sewage, an issue like that, the system notifies them 24 hours a day so they can keep tabs on everything.
Thank you. Any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Okay. Motion passes 148 to 1. Motion 9C. Move the town appropriate $85,000 to pay costs associated with the engineering of drainage projects on French Street, Breckenridge Road, and Huntington Road, and to meet this appropriation, the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the General Laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Phil, once again.
These drainage projects are for the engineering phase only at this point. As far as the mower goes, we are only purchasing one mower. It's shown. Okay, just the engineering at this point, sorry.
Any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Motion 9D. Move the town appropriate $45,000 to pay costs associated with the purchase of a new mower for the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and authorize the treasurer to borrow with the approval of the Select Board $45,000 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended or any other authorization. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) as most recently amended. That the Water and Sewer Commissioners are authorized to expend all funds available for the purchase and to take any other action necessary to carry out the purchase. Motion and a second. Mr. Phil, now you can talk about the mower.
All right. This is for one mower. It's listed three times there, $15,000 apiece, because the cost is divided between water, sewer, and highway divisions. This will replace an existing John Deere mower that the engine needs to be replaced. Unfortunately, the complete engine assemblies are no longer available, so the only option we would have is to overhaul the engine, which would be about $15,000 itself, which might be okay, but the machine's got some rust issues as it stands. That mower is a 2012 and has 1,412 hours on it. The new mower will be able to use the existing snow blower and sweeper attachments that we have for the existing mower.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Motion 9E. Move the town appropriate $400,000 to pay costs associated with the purchase of a new plow truck and sander for the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer to borrow with the approval of the Select Board $400,000 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended. That the Water Commission is authorized to expend all funds available for the purchase and to take any other action necessary to carry out the purchase. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Phil, please.
This purchase is divided between highway and water, $200,000 each. The truck that's being replaced is a 2004 International Dump Truck with a sander. It has 77,566 miles on it, and at this point, the frame is rusting through and there's quite a few mechanical issues with the truck.
Thank you. Any questions on this one? Mr. Kelly?
Bill Kelly, 111 Stockbridge Street, also a current employee on the water department. The only issue I have with this is this $200,000 out of water reserves. We don't use the 10-wheel truck. I think water reserves should be used for something more importantly in water. For instance, infrastructure, South Maple Street, Mill Valley Road. I don't think water reserves should be used for a DPW truck that the water department has very, very, very little use with.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions or wanted to speak to this? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Okay, I gotta count this, so hang on. Thank you. Motion passes 114 to 35. Motion 9F. Move the town appropriate $255,000 to pay costs associated with the purchase of a new payloader for the Department of Public Works, including the payment of all costs incidental and related thereto, and to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer to borrow with the approval of the Select Board $255,000 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 and 8 of the General Laws and/or Chapter 29(c) of the General Laws as most recently amended. That such bonds or notes shall be general obligations of the town unless the treasurer with the approval of the Select Board determines that they should be issued as limited obligations and may be secured by local system revenues as defined in Section 1 of Chapter 29(c) as most recently amended. That the Water Commission is authorized to expend all funds available for the project and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects. I have a motion and a second. Mr. Phil, please.
This loader will replace a 1995 John Deere loader with 11,949 hours on it. Not necessarily a lot of hours on the loader itself, but the issue is the availability of parts and the age of the loader. It's tough to find parts, especially in the middle of winter when we have breakdowns.
Mr. Kelly?
Bill Kelly, 111 Stockbridge Street, again, employee of the water department. The same feeling. I just don't think water reserves should be used for a loader that is not really water-related. We use, again, this machine very little. We have bigger issues in town with water infrastructure that need to be addressed, and we keep putting them on the back burner, and a new dump truck and a new payloader is not going to help those issues. I predict that the fall town meeting will probably be here raising water and sewer rates. I don't think that a reserve fund should be used to fund equipment that's not related to water.
Thank you. Sherri?
Sharon Parsons, 137 Mill Valley Road. First of all, I would like to thank the previous speaker for his consideration of the water quality that we have on Mill Valley Road. No person should have to turn their bathtub water, should look at their bathtub water and see it be brown. I see this regularly. Water is a function of life, a very important one, and for me to have to deal with bad water in my home every single day is unnecessary. It's about time that the water was fixed on Mill Valley Road and South Maple Street.
Thank you.
Suzanne Moser for Cozera Ave. I have a question. Why is the water reserve being used for this as opposed to other sources?
Thank you. Who can answer that question, please? Sure? Where, Scott, would you answer that, please? Scott is the interim DPW Director.
Good evening, Scott McCarthy, interim director. When, we can, you can do that because the loader does load and offload material within the water department, so it is used within the water department. That's why we are requesting funds from the water department to help with this purchase. It is used within the enterprise, so it can be funded partially through the enterprise.
Okay. Does that answer your question? Okay, thank you. Ms. Keegan?
Molly Keegan, 16 Hadley Place. I just realized, I don't think we know what the balances are going to be once, assuming these articles pass. Could somebody tell us what the balances will be remaining in the water and sewer reserves?
I apologize, our town treasurer is not able to be here, and she would have those balances.
I believe that's a no. And nobody has any idea? Okay. I certainly don't. Paulette?
Paulette Castaba, 40 Knightly Road. Question I have is this, along with the one previous and the next item, shows that it is 50% water reserves. Will the water department or water division use this equipment 50% of the time? If not, then I don't believe the water department or water reserve should be used for 50% of the payment.
Thank you. Okay. If you've got, if you've got an answer, bring it up, please.
In the general budget that we just approved on the
In the general budget that we just approved on the, at the beginning of the meeting here with all the articles, or it's in Article seven, the balances for the enterprise, oh no, that's enterprise receipts, okay, hang on, hang on a minute. I think it's here. Okay. Enterprise funds. Other enterprise, other available funds, reserves, sewer, there's 97,609, and the water reserves is 110,000, 067. That's what's in the budget book. That's what here, it's in Article eight. Well, these are, these are the balances.
I get it, but I just, I don't think it's.
So I think it's a little confusing with how it's written. We kind of went back and forth whether to put revenues or reserves. So we borrow, but we pay it back through the debt service that you see if you were to see the line, item by line item for the enterprise funds. So we're borrowing, but we're, you're using, we're paying back the principal, there's, it's, we're paying it back through the budget. So it's not all coming out of what's going to be, we're not taking this lump sum out. Okay? So it's the debt service. So you're not going, again, yeah.
Molly, does that help? Okay, David, come up, please come up and say that, because I'm sure people can't hear you in the back.
I don't have the balances, but you are not reducing the fund balance by purchasing these items. We are borrowing the money and paying the debt service on these items with water and sewer, in this case, it's water revenues coming in, so that the reserve fund is not being reduced by this purchase.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Okay, hang on, I gotta count, so don't, because this one might be close. Okay, thank you. All those opposed? Okay, I got it, thank you. This motion needs two-thirds, and there's 75 in favor, 53 against, motion fails. Seventy-five, 53. I believe that's not two-thirds. No. Moving on to nine G. Move the town appropriate $98,622 to pay the cost of carpeting replacement in the school's administrative offices, purchase of projectors and screens, upgrading Wi-Fi at Hadley Elementary School, and the upgrade of network switching. And to meet this appropriation, authorize the treasurer to borrow with the approval of the select board $98,622 pursuant to Chapter 44, Section seven and eight of the general laws or pursuant to any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. A motion and a second. David, you got this one, or somebody else?
Okay, thanks.
So if you have any specific questions on any of the school items, I know Dr. Mackenzie's here, but I just wanted to say they, the schools held off on their capital requests during COVID, when we were in quite a bit of budget crunch time period. And so the Capitol Committee, you know, we thought these were all very reasonable requests, replacing very old carpet, projectors and screens, and Wi-Fi and networking upgrades within the schools.
Any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes 125 to 1. Article 11 is the revolving fund. 10 was in the consent agenda, I believe. 10 was in the consent agenda, so we're going, moving to 11. Finance Committee and Select Board both recommend this 500. Move the town vote to amend Section 86-9 of Chapter 86 of the Code of the Town of Hadley to establish annual expenses allowed for existing revolving funds pursuant to the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53e, 1 slash 2. Is that a half or one and two? Okay. Section 53e and a half. That's the motion. Have a motion and a second. Amy Parsons is going to speak to this, please.
Oh, there we go, thank you. Okay. This provides a way for departments to make expenditures and receive revenue related directly to services that they provide. These are caps and spending, not allocations from a budget appropriation. There is no impact on taxation.
Thank you. Any questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Articles 12 and 13 were in the consent agenda, so we're moving on to Article 14. This is an article concerning CPA funds and the First Church steeple. Move the town, oh wait, hang on, CPA recommends 700. Finance Committee recommends 320. Select Board recommends 500. Move the town to vote to transfer $100,000 from the Community Preservation Act Historic Fund to the First Congregational Church of Hadley for the preservation and/or rehabilitation of the church steeple, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into a grant agreement with the First Congregational Church of Hadley, setting forth the terms of said grant, including a provision requiring said funds to be expended within two years of the date of town meeting approval, and any unspent funds will automatically be returned to the foregoing Community Preservation Act Fund by that date. Have a motion and a second. Someone from the church like to speak to this?
John Shaw from Seven Quillen Drive. Just to give you a little brief history about what's going on with the church steeple itself. Over the past two to three years, as you start to head towards the church, past the library, and start to look up at this spire and also the bell tower, over the past two years, there has been conce, or there has been a noticeable tilt in the church, or not the church, but in the steeple. And it seems to have grown in regards to tilting towards the back, the east side of the church itself. We went inside to look at it, to investigate it, and what we found out is some of the timbers just below where the bell is located, a couple of them are starting to split and crack. There are also some that are deteriorating because of decay. And there are a few built, are few that are up in the bell area itself that are also decaying. And we have had a number of companies come down to take a look at it, as well as a structural engineer to take and see what they would recommend for us to do to repair it. And what we're afraid of is, especially with a lot of the winds that have been more than what they used to be because of the environment itself, there's been a lot of stress on that bell tower itself. And we feel that there, at some point, because of the rot and the decay, that that tower possibly will have the possibility of falling in. And we really do not want it to go either into the driveway between the church and the town hall or do any damage or have anything else happen in that area.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Silvestro, 157 Rocky Hill Road. I'd like to express my concern about the possible CPA expenditure of Hadley public funds to pay for the restoration of the Congregational Church steeple. First, let me say that I value the work of the Hadley CPA Committee, and they have done much to improve the quality of life of Hadley over the years of their existence. Excellent committee. I also wanted to commend Mary Thayer for providing me with information about the nature of renovation. She's been very open and very forthcoming in responding to my questions. Second, over many years, the Hadley Congregational Church has been an outstanding civic neighbor in Hadley and has often participated in kind acts that have helped Hadley residents and organizations. They're a wonderful church and organization. Third, I totally agree with the previous speaker, the steeple needs to be repaired. It's in very bad shape. I've seen the application for the request for funding, and there is a need to repair it. With that said, I believe the contribution of any funds, whether it be $1 or $100,000, can be viewed as a potential violation of the U.S. Constitution's First Amendment Establishment Clause, which prohibits the government from making any law respecting an establishment of religion. This law not only forbids the government from establishing an official religion, but also prohibits government actions that unduly favor one religion over another. It also prohibits the government from unduly preferring religion over non-religion or non-religion over religion. Recent court cases in our very own state of Massachusetts have clearly rejected the use of public funds to churches for the purposes of church renovations. The Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court, the highest court in Massachusetts, dealt with a similar case to the current Hadley Congregational Church request. The case in 2018, Kaplan versus Town of Acton, involved whether grants made by the Town's Community Preservation Act Committee to Acton's Congregational Church were legally permissible under the Anti-Aide Amendment to the State Constitution, where the Town of Acton asserted that the grants serve the recognized public purpose of historical preservation. However, in an unanimous decision, the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court ruled that the Acton CPA funds could not be used for the requested Congregational Church renovations because it violated both the Anti-Aide Amendment to the State Constitution and the First Amendment Establishment Clause of the United States Constitution. I'll try and finish up quickly here.
Please.
So the Acton case is parallel to the current Hadley CPS request, CPA request for funding for the Congregational Church steeple renovation. For that reason, I'm asking that the voters of Hadley reject the request for Community Preservation Act funds as this would be a violation of the state and U.S. Constitutions. However, as an alternative source of funding for the much-needed steeple repair, I am suggesting that the Congregational Church initiate a community fundraising drive, maybe call it Save the Steeple, or something else.
Okay, time, please, that's.
Okay, to raise funds for the need repairs, and I would like, I'd be pleased to make a contribution to such a worthwhile cause.
Okay, time, time, please. You're going, you're getting off topic.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Watley?
Kirk Watley, 133 Huntington Road. A question for the church, is the church a historical building in the town of, a recognized historical building in the town of Hadley?
Good question. Who can answer that?
I hear a lot of mumbles saying yes. Is there an official answer?
Alan Weinberg, 108 Bay Road. I'm speaking as a member of the Historical Society. And the church is part of the Town Center Historic District. It's, it's a key building that was identified and included in the, on the National Historic Register of historic buildings, so yes, it is a key part of the historic Town Center. I'll also say that I hope somebody will speak to the legal question, because I, my understanding is that the Community Preservation Committee did look or asked for an opinion about that Kaplan case specifically, and that there is a distinction between, excuse me, between religious-related renovations such as the altar inside the church and the outside parts of the church, which are not specifically religious in nature. And I'll also add, the Historical Society is in favor of the CPA money being spent for this important structure. And we should remember how important this church has been, this specific church, which has been in town since 1804, I believe, is the year, before it was moved to the present location. And it's, it's served as a school, it's, the town school, it's, it's served the town in times of flood. It's, it was the town before, for 200 years. And it's an iconic structure that I don't think we would want to see that steeple fall on Town Hall. That would be bad. And I think this is the proper use of CPA, in my opinion.
Thank you. Andy?
Hi, Andy Morris Friedman, 45 Roosevelt Street. I'm an at-large member of the CPA Committee. Let me try to answer some of these issues, these important issues of separation of church and state. The, I'm not an attorney, okay, so for what it's worth. The Acton, the Supreme Judicial Court in the Acton decision set up a three-part criteria for allowing municipal money in a religious, for helping a religious institution. We feel on the CPA Committee, the CPA Coalition in Boston, and the town attorney all feel that this project meets those three criteria. They are, they cannot help fund the church for its primary mission, which is seen as gaining converts. It cannot be used on religious iconography. Now, some may argue that a steeple is a religious icon, and they have a point. The steeple has a point, so do the people. But it's also an architectural element of a historic building, so it has two ways of looking at it. And the third, just slipped my mind, I'm sorry, what the third criteria is. It has to be a historic building and not a private building. So in Acton, they wanted to spend money on the parsonage. So although they're parallel projects, they're not exactly the same. So, although they're parallel projects, they're not exactly the same. We felt very strongly that this is an important historic building, and to see it as preserving the historic viewscape of our Town Center, keeping the look of the Town Center the way it has been for all these years. I think that's--
Mary's gonna bail you out, Andy.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mary.
Mary Thayer, 179 Hockenheim Road. I do want to mention, I am a member of the church, I'm also the church historian. We, as the CPA Committee, I'm chair of the CPA Committee as well, and we were concerned with this question because we had, when we talked to the state coalition, this Community Preservation Coalition that we're members of, they mentioned this case and said that we may want to really investigate it. And we certainly wanted to protect the town and also be able to fund this if it was appropriate. And so, we did contact KP Law after our meeting in January, and specifically asked them to review this. Attorney Blake, I don't know if you want to respond to that, or, and say what the, your opinion, or your firm's opinion was on this?
That would be fine, I think that's appropriate.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Moderator, to the prior speaker. And first, thank everybody for having me here tonight. I'm happy to be here, it's good to see you folks again. You are correct, the prior speaker. My firm was asked to weigh in on this, and we did use the three-part test that the prior speaker to the prior speaker discussed. And while there is a somewhat of a fine line, courts do guard whether or not we're using public funds for promotion of religion. There are plenty of cases out there, and this isn't the first time me or my firm has advised the town, where you have a building like this that is historically significant. I left my phone over there, but I understand that this was used for a school at one point, it was one of the first meeting houses in the town, and the renovations that are being required don't have any religious significance. We have opined that it is a proper use of CPA funds.
Thank you.
My name is Lynn Leatham, I live in 111 Highland Circle. Through you, Mr. Moderator, I would like to ask if anyone knows the approximate full cost of this project, and what the extent of the contribution from the church will be toward the repair. Thank you.
Okay. You guys under, hear the question? First church members? Mr. Bechek?
Kurt Bechek, 7 Frallow Drive. I'm also on the Board of Properties at the church. We have budgeted $110,000 for the project, and the contractor that we are working with, or we are anticipating working with, has given us a price of $82,025. Because a lot of the parts of the steeple are not easily accessed, we anticipate that the cost may rise above that. That's why we have budgeted $110,000, of which the church has committed itself to $10,000.
Thank you. I think that answers the question. You got 'em trained, Joyce.
Andy Morris Friedman, 45 Roosevelt Street. I remember the third criteria. Money can't be used in a part of the building used for religious services. That's the third criteria. So, as far as I know, they do not hold services up in the steeple. And so, it passes the three criteria. The only thing that could happen if we do pass this is that someone will sue us to stop the expenditure. It's not like the state police come and take our CPA money back, or anything like that. So, I hope that the question of church and state, which is taken very seriously in tonight's discussion, will, people will refrain from suing us. That's what I hope, because the church is an important institution in this town, and it's our responsibility to help them.
Thank you. Mary?
I just want to declare something with the CPA funds. When, it's at town meeting that it's decided whether a project gets approved, and if it is approved, the funds aren't given directly to the recipient, whether it's the library or the cemetery committee, or a church. Instead, the treasurer, the accountant takes that, say it's $50,000, out of the CPA available funds, and puts it in a separate line item that has the project and that $50,000. As bills come in, those bills are approved by the appropriate town department head, or by the town treasurer, town administrator, and then the accountant pays it out of that specific fund, so it can't ever be paid more than $50,000. If, when the project is done, or when the, the time is up, and if there's not an extension granted, then, say there's $10,000 left in that fund, it gets put back into the available CPA fund by a vote of town meeting, which we actually did in the consent agreement for several other items. So, it's, it's only what's used gets spent out of the CPA, it's not just given and then taken back. Right now, the CPA fund, available fund, has $2.5 million, and there's another $650,000 that has already been earmarked for specific projects. And all of those projects are current, they've been voted on within the last two years, or they have had an extension granted within the last two years.
Mr. Bechek?
Do I need to introduce myself again?
Yes, every time you come to the microphone.
Kurt Bechek, 7 Frallow Drive.
Thank you.
I wanted to mention that the building has served as a community resource for over 200 years. Some of the groups who are still using the building are the Hadley Men's Club, I think at least three Girl Scout troops, AA groups, Hadley Grange, Hampshire County Farm Bureau, and it has, has also provided classrooms for schools, like with the, when the Pioneer Valley Performing Arts Charter School was located across the street, they used some of our classrooms. So, it is a community asset, as well as a place of worship, and we feel it's a historical site that's worthy of preserving.
Jim Chalfin, 16 Meadowbrook Drive, Hadley. I believe several years ago that $250,000 was appropriated to pay for the painting of the outside of the church. And from a historical point of view, I believe that we should pay to fix the steeple.
Thank you. Yes?
Sarah Strong, Middle Street. I'm just curious, does it, the $100,000, $10,000 balance between the CPA and the church? If the church were to raise more than that, would that then reduce, that would increase the amount of money from the CPA that would probably go back to the CPA at the end of the project? So, if the church was able to raise additional money, that money would be spent first, before the CPA money? Is that correct?
Mary, you should explain that process, please.
As I understand it, the town accountant--
Mask, please.
Mary Thayer, 179 Hockenheim Road. As I understand it, the town accountant will pay what invoices are approved by the town administrator and by the, or the appropriate department head. I'm not, I don't, there is a grant agreement, I'm not sure it spells out who pays what first. I mean, the, the town, if this is approved at $100,000, that the CPA can be asked for, funds can be asked for to be paid the $100,000. So, I'm not sure, I'm not sure how to answer that otherwise.
Mr. Bechek?
Kurt Bechek, 7 Frallow Drive. To answer the previous speaker, the church was painted in 2017 to 2018. The cost was approximately $62,000, and it was paid in its entirety by the church.
One more time.
Mary Thayer, 179 Hockenheim Road. I think the confusion is, there was some funds, it wasn't quite that amount, that was made available for the North Hadley Church. 2018, it was $55,000, and I believe there was another time earlier, but the painting was at North Hadley Church.
I'm sorry, the Jim Chalfin, 16 Meadowbrook Drive. It was a town hall. Sorry, sorry.
You're forgiven. Yes, ma'am?
Cheryl Crutis, 27 Meadow Street.
Could you step a little closer to the mic, please?
Okay. Somebody did mention, North Hadley Congregational Church, we gave them $56,000 in 2018, and then they came back in the fall and needed $26,000 more dollars to complete the work. And so, my attitude is, we've already gone through this, is it, you know, okay to do a church thing? Anyways, but, I wonder whether we should put a limit on how much we're willing to go with this, because I don't know, you know, I don't know, they said they've gotten several estimates from contractors, so hopefully those are legitimate, you know, estimates on how much it's going to cost, so they don't come back and say, oh, we need another $100,000.
Well, every time, if they were to do that, every time they'd come for more money, it has to come to town meeting to get voted on, so that is the limiting factor there.
I know that, but I kind of, I'm, you're probably right. I mean, you're not gonna tell them, gee, you can only fix half of the steeple, or something, but on the other hand, contractors sometimes need a little bit of push in a certain direction.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but it would have to come back before town meeting every time, and the people will decide what the limit is.
Kirk Watley, 133 Huntington Road. Mr. Moderator, I called the question.
Yes, sir, okay.
Pardon?
Okay, two-thirds. So, Mr. Watley called the question, which means that he's, feels, there's been enough discussion about this. So, we have to vote on his motion to call the question, it's a two-thirds majority required. So, all those in favor of calling the question, ending discussion, raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Motion passes, 120 to 1. Okay, now, we are going to vote on Article 14. So, all those in favor of passing Article 14 signify by raising your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes, just needs a majority for that. Article 15 is another CPA article, this was for Zaturka Park improvements. CPA recommends 700, Finance Committee recommends 500, Select Board recommends 500. Move the town vote to transfer $24,100 from the Community Preservation Act Open Space Fund to the Hadley Park and Recreation Commission for improving Zaturka Park with playground equipment, benches, and a covered picnic table area, and any and all expenses incidental thereto. Said funds to be expended under the direction of the Hadley Park and Recreation Commission and the town administrator within two years of the date of town meeting approval, and any unspent funds will automatically be returned to the foregoing Community Preservation Act fund by that date. A motion and a second. Park and Rec Director Greg Lissage, are you here?
I'm Park and Rec Director Greg Lissage. So, the total cost of the project is $48,000. We're asking for 50% of that, $24,000. We'll come up with the other half on ourselves. We've already received about a $10,000 grant from Home Depot to supply some of the park benches, and gazebo, and some of those other things. Really, we want to make the park where it's functional and usable. It's, I think it's a beautiful area, but we need to take it a step up and have a place for, for the kids to play, and for families to enjoy that area. The playscapes, with, we, there's room, there's already two areas that are already set up for playsets. One of the playsets we're looking at is for ages two to four, two, two to 12. The other one is for five to 12. So, there, I mean, everything's already there. You know, they already have the woodchip area for kids, and that picnic area is right next to, next to those play areas. There's also already areas around the walking path for the benches, so everything's set up for that project to move forward.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on this? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the next two articles, Articles 16 and 17, are for an APR, to fund an APR on a, on a property on South Maple Street. There's two articles, same property, different funding sources. So, it's gonna sound similar, but it, they're different. So, on Article 16, the CPA recommends 601, Finance Committee recommends 500, Select Board recommends 500. Move the town vote to appropriate $57,000 from the CPA Open Space Fund for the purpose of acquiring an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on all or a portion of the parcel of the property known as the West Farm, Assessors Map 9, Parcel 60C, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire said APR by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, and to be a coholder, coholder of said APR, which funds, if not expended within two years of the date of the town meeting approval, will automatically be returned to the foregoing CPA fund. Motion and a second. Somebody from the Conservation Commission, Shyla Davis, supposed to speak to this? And here she comes.
Good evening, everyone. For those who I haven't had the chance to meet yet, my name is Shyla Davis, I am the Conservation Agent for the town of Hadley. So, speaking to Articles 16 and 17, the CPA Committee has agreed to help us fund the acquisition of new APR land. So, for folks who don't know, APR stands for Agricultural Preservation Restriction, which is a restriction put on agricultural land to keep it as agricultural land in perpetuity. There are restrictions set forth by the Massachusetts Department of Agricultural, Agriculture, and the funding historically has been split between the Conservation Commission Transfer of Development Rights Fund, and the, the Community Preservation Committee's Open Space Funding, and their general funds. So, the initial appraisal came in for this property from the state, and it went out for a second appraisal. When it came back, it was higher than previous, which the state had initially made their appraisal and set their limit of how much they would agree to fund. Typically, the state funds-- Typically, the state funds a large majority. So for this particular parcel, I believe it's about 68 acres of land on South Maple Street, and the state, I can't remember off the top of my head how much they agreed to fund. The Conservation Commission had voted to fund $33,000. The town ended up being asked in the end for $90,000, leaving $57,000 left for the CPA Committee, who was kind enough to go over half the amount. I think that leaves us at about 36% conservation and the remaining 64% to the Community Preservation Committee.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Watley.
Kirk Watley, 133 Huntington Road. I did not do my homework on this article, so this is on me, and I apologize to Mr. Moderator for that. Not being familiar with the property, many years ago, when I was in your position previously, we did CPA monies and we bought a swamp. This is not, there's no swamp on this property, I trust.
That is correct.
Thank you.[673.18][673.18](Laughter).
Mary.
There is no swamp. The state is putting in about $563,000. The town was asked to do 90, so it's, it's nice, it's, and a lot of the land is forest, but it's also a lot of agricultural that the West family currently farms.
Thank you. Any other questions regarding this article? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Article 17, same property, funding from Transfer of Development Rights this time. And Conservation Commission recommends 500. Finance Committee recommends 500. Select Board recommends 500. Move the town vote to transfer $33,000 from the Transfer of Development Rights Fund for the purpose of acquiring an agricultural preservation restriction, APR, on all or a portion of the parcel of the property known as the West Farm, Assessors Map 9, Parcel 60C, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire said APR by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain, and to be a coholder of said APR. Have a motion and a second. As I said earlier, this is the exact same property. The Conservation Commission agent already spoke to the fact that this money was coming out of the Transfer of Development Rights, so I don't think we need to bring her back up unless anybody has any questions. Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 18 is another CPA fund article. This is for the Hockenheim Cemetery Fence. CPA Committee recommends 700. Select Board recommends 500. Move the town vote to transfer $18,000 from the Community Preservation Act Historic Set Aside Fund to the Hadley Cemetery Committee. Said funds to be in addition to the $65,000 previously approved under Article 2 of the May 2021 Annual Town Meeting for the purpose of replacing the stone fence at the historic Hockenheim Cemetery, and to authorize the Select Board to enter into such agreements on behalf of the town as may be necessary or appropriate, provided that said funds, if not expended within two years from the date of town meeting approval, will revert back to the foregoing Community Preservation Act fund. Have a motion and a second. Mr. Weinberg, please.
Alan Weinberg, 108 Bay Road. I'm the Chairman of the Cemetery Committee. This project started off in the summer of 2020, when we had a study done to look into replacing the fence, the stone wall fence at the Hockenheim Cemetery, which is the second oldest cemetery in the town. We went to CPA to get approval for $65,000, which is what the budget was determined to be at that time, and we then were going to go to the fall town meeting to get the money approved by town meeting, but that meeting, that particular meeting was cut short. I think it was lack of a quorum, so we did not get, that was not voted on until the next spring, which was May of 2021. We were approved for $65,000. Then we had to go back and complete the bid specs and update the plans and prepare for going out to bid, which, because of COVID, took several more months, which brought us to this spring. And we, at that time, getting ready to go out to bid, thought it's two years since the project was conceptualized, and it might be a good idea to revisit the budget in view of the skyrocketing costs, the supply chain issues, and we asked our consultant to revisit the budget, and it came back at a higher amount of more than, more than the $65,000. So we're asking for an additional $18,000, so when we do go out to bid, we'll have a better chance of getting it done within the budget.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Next is Article 19, the plastic bag ban. Finance Committee recommends this 410. Select Board recommends this 140. I'm going to read the motion, get a motion and a second from the front table, and then I'm going to make them, ask somebody for a motion to waive the reading of the whole article, because it's going to take a long time and I'm sure be very confusing, but if you have questions, you can certainly ask them. Move the town amend the Town of Hadley General Bylaws, Chapter 104, Health and Sanitation, by adding a new section, 104-7, Plastic Reduction, as delineated in Article 19 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 5, 2022, and incorporated by reference herein. Have a motion and a second. Before we move any further, somebody want to make a motion to waive the reading? Okay, have a motion and a second to waive the reading. Any questions on that? All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Does this require two-thirds? No? Okay, motion passes. All right. So Jane, are you going to speak to this?
Yes, thank, yes, thank you. Am I on?
Yes.
Article 19 is to support an area-wide effort to reduce the amount of plastic waste that goes into landfills or blows around as litter. Plastic never truly disintegrates, but turns into small pellets, which are found in all animals in the food chain, including humans. By passing this bylaw, Hadley will join 148 other communities in Massachusetts that have already passed similar bylaws, including Amherst, Northampton, East Hampton, and South Hadley. This bylaw includes more than just single-use plastic bags. It also bans the use of single, one-time use of disposable plastic and styrofoam containers for takeout foods. Straws are included in the ban. There are many businesses in our town and area, including McDonald's, Wendy's, Ginger Garden, Whole Foods, who have already made the transfer to not using single-use plastics. Some have gone to paper, some to reusable plastic. National statistics indicate that only 5% of all plastics are recycled. The other 95% is disposed of in landfills, littered, thrown from cars, or floats forever in the ocean. A recent survey of traffic on Route 9 in Hadley indicates that there are, on average, 100,000 people a day, 100,000 cars a day using this road. With Hadley having a population of 5,500, this ban is mostly addressing the non-residents who pass through our town, who eat here, who shop here, and who may or may not dispose of their plastics correctly. The Climate Change Committee had a trash cleanup day in April, and 30 people worked hard in the rain and pulled hundreds of bags of trash from the sides of the road to clean up our town. We can no longer ignore the long-term effects of overfilling our landfills, the littering of our roads, and the impact that trash has on the planet.
Thank you. Would anybody like to speak to this? Mr. Watley.
Kirk Watley, 133 Huntington Road. In private conversations, I feel as though I speak for many people that are sitting here. I oppose this with all vim and vigor. Straws alone account for 0.03% of all plastics in landfills. That was a quick number I caught on the way here as well. Why don't we make it a choice? I go to stop and shop, I go to Big Y, I bring my own bags. I don't want it ram down my throat that I've got to do something. I would like to have the opportunity to choose what I do. Those little plastic bags, I love them. I use them in the bathroom. I use them all around the house. I use those to get rid of the trash and to collect those, which also, otherwise, would go into a plastic bag to do that as well. I think that something like this, and I was talking to another gentleman, maybe he will address it, I don't want to call anyone out by name, but the energy that it takes to produce a plastic bag versus the energy it takes to produce a recyclable bag, the contrast is quite stark. But I think this should be a choice that people make. If you want to cut down on plastic use, don't go to Mickey D's, don't go to Burger King, bring your own bags to stop and shop. Heck, if you go to a family farm, or you go to the Chinese takeout place or something like that, bring your own bag. This should be a personal choice, like many of us here have a personal choice to wear a mask tonight, and other people have a choice not to wear a mask. This is about something that we can choose to do or not do ourselves, instead of having the government go thunk, you will do this. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brewer.
Bruce Brewer, 18 Meadowbrook Drive. I'm on the Climate Change Committee, and I just want to mention that the reason, a reason why we are initiating these bylaws, are proposing them, is that, as one of the previous speakers mentioned, that we have a very serious plastic waste problem in our town, as well as throughout the country. Right now, we have recyclables for plastic containers and bottles, aluminum cans, and the reason why we do that is because of a state law. Sometimes problems such as we face with single-use plastic bags raise to an issue where you need to pass a law, in our case, a bylaw, to help manage that. You can't ignore it any longer. So that is why we're proposing these bylaws. In terms of highlighting some of the parts of the bylaw, the bylaws that we have proposed, many similar elements are found in Northampton, Amherst, East Hampton, and South Hadley. Three of those are our budding communities. And what we're recommending, and I think most of you get the general idea, that when you go to a checkout in a food establishment or a retail store, we want to use, have stores produce bags that are reusable, or you're bringing your own, or a paper bag. So what we're recommending is that those bags that are used are compostable, recyclable, or reusable, similar to what you find in Northampton. Now at the Walmart, if anybody shops there, if anybody shops at Big Y, you'll see that they produce a bag, but you're charged up to 10 cents for a paper bag if you don't bring your own. Food service ware is made out of styrofoam or plastic that is not recyclable, will not be able to be dispersed by food establishments, or nonprofits, or Hadley food service providers such as the Senior Center. Plastic straws are not to be distributed. In food establishments, they will be compostable. If a customer wants to use a plastic straw, they can ask for one, or people can bring their own. These bylaws are proposed to take effect on January 1, 2023, so establishments will have an opportunity to use up their inventory or, and to find alternatives. And in the bylaw, an establishment can seek a hardship deferment, so if they think by the passing of this ordinance will pose economic difficulty for them, they can request one. And in the bylaw, there is also a section on penalties and enforcement, which would be done by the town administrator or her designee.
Thank you. Mr. Morris Friedman.
Andy Morris Friedman, 45 Roosevelt Street. Just briefly before I begin, Randy, I want to thank you for your term as moderator. I think you've done a great job of leading us through some difficult decisions, and we're going to miss you.
Thank you, but let's keep, let's keep it to the point.
I stand in favor of the so-called "plastic bag ban," even though it's not a ban. I have some questions that hopefully people can answer. Will I, if we pass the "plastic bag ban," will I still be able to use plastic bags at my house? Yes, I'll be able to use plastic bags at my house. Will I be able to use plastic bags to bring garbage to the transfer station? So I'll still be able to do that. Will I be able to bring my own plastic bags to the supermarket if I like plastic bags better than the alternative? Will I be able to go to stores in other towns that still use plastic bags if that's the most important issue for me? If I'm pulled over by a Hadley policeman and I have a plastic bag in my car, will I be arrested?
Okay.
Well, maybe not me, but I mean, in general. So, so the only ban is that stores won't put our products in plastic bags anymore. Or you could, or you could, might get a recyclable plastic bag. So it's, it's not really a ban, is it? It's just a measure to reduce trash.
Joyce, come up to the microphone or, please, so people in the back can hear you.
The bags that are in Walmart now are supposedly biodegradable. The bags over in Northampton in Walmart are really thick plastic bags. They are still plastic bags. They can still be found on the wayside or wherever else. It doesn't make any difference, however you want to change it, there still will be plastic something. So I don't know what the difference is of how we're going to change this all. There are some people that need to drink through straws, somebody that's had a stroke, somebody that needs to have the plastic. Yes, they may ask for the plastic straw, but we're kind of making it demanding that they abide by our rules in all the other places, and we don't govern what restaurants and other places do on their own, because they're governed by their capital quarters also. So I mean, there's a lot of other things that participate in this besides Hadley saying you can't have plastic bags, you can't have plastic straws. I mean, there are a lot of other things that play into this factor.
But this bylaw isn't to regulate our behavior, it's to keep businesses from using bags that add to pollution, do not degrade.
Correct, but even the bags that they're using may be biodegradable, like I said, but they still can be found everywhere.
So it's not perfect.
It's not perfect, no.
But it's an improvement, and that's why I support it.
It might be an improvement.
Thank you, Andy. Yes. There's not a, this is not an individual discussion. He asked a question. He asks a question, she has an answer for him, okay? Yeah. Shell.
Shell Harrow, it's 16 Barstow Lane. I biked here this evening up Route 47, up Hockenham Hill, and as usual, I was appalled by all the crap lying on the side of the road, including lots and lots of single-use plastic bags, as well as other stuff. And I do not quite understand the behavior of people who would toss this stuff out of their car window, but when a plastic bag is thrown into the wind, it is likely to have impact on wildlife, and particularly birds. And I don't know how many people saw the beautiful red-tailed hawk that I saw one day when I brought my garbage to the transfer station, but I shudder to think of that magnificent animal choking to death on a plastic bag or a piece of one. I think we should join the many communities around us that have adopted this, and I, you know, I will use a plastic bag until it falls apart, even a single-use one. So I probably have a five-year supply right now that my wife would love to see me get rid of, and I keep saying, they're going to ban them, we have to save them. So people can do that too and hang on to them as long as they want. But in the meantime, let's keep them out of the litter stream, let's keep them out of the mouths of wildlife, and let's keep them out of the landfills, and let's keep them from degrading and adding toxics to the environment, bit by microscopic mitt for, I don't know how many hundreds of years before they're gone.
Thank you.
So I'm voting yes.
Yes.
Suzanne Moser, 4 Kozira Ave., and I'm a member of the Hadley Climate Change Committee. I can't even begin to tell you how many reasons there are to reduce plastic bags. I appreciate one of the previous speaker's insistence on his free choice to use it. A mother who feeds her baby by breast has no choice, that baby has no choice, but gets the plastic, microplastic, through the mother milk. Is that what we want? When we can make just the beginnings of a difference, a whale doesn't have a choice. Can we be in favor of a livable environment? Can we be in favor of, you know, a beautiful Hadley that we all like to go to and walk in and not just constantly have to... Every morning, I walk and I pick up trash. I come home with a plastic bag that I pick out of the road with more trash, every single morning. Is that what we want? You have just preserved land to keep it beautiful here? Why not help that? I don't understand how we cannot have a bigger perspective, make a small contribution, we have alternatives. Why is it not possible we can make a single bit of a small change that is not going to kill anyone's business, reduce anyone's choice? It is simply putting us on a better path. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary Lou.
Mary Lou Lorenza, 13 Hadley Place. I would like to have a support this initiative. I think it's a great step forward, and the technology is out there. Bags can be made that are recyclable, compostable, they've been used for years and years, many other communities do it, and to move in that direction is really, I think, the best way for Hadley to go, and our businesses will support that too, and we can support our businesses who do that.
Thank you. Yes.
Christine Pipchinsky, 151 River Drive. I just want to, I have a question, a point of clarification, because we didn't read through the whole thing. I'm just asking about 1.2.5, where it says disposable food service ware transferred to any consumer must be recyclable or made of compostable materials that meet the criteria. Under the definition, that says any bowls, plates, trays, cartons, cups, lids, straws, straws, forks, spoons, knives, film wrap, and other items designed for one time or non-durable uses. So this isn't just about plastic bags. I'm in favor of the plastic bags, don't get me wrong. I get that, I mean, I always use reusable. I have no problem with that. What I do, I'm just curious about the other things that are in it, and if somebody could speak to those, because I find those would be a huge burden on small businesses.
Who can speak to that? Bruce, please.
Okay, I'm not necessarily an expert in all this, but these elements of our bylaws are drafted and reflect many of the same definitions that you'll find in Amherst, North Hampton, East Hampton, and South Hadley and other towns. And like I think some of the previous speakers mentioned, disposable food service ware covers basically beverages, as well as food containers that are used that, for example, when you're taking food home from a restaurant, if I was putting on a chicken barbecue, which I do for a church, it would basically apply to food ware that you use to allow customers to come and take their food away, and that would also cover forks, knives, and spoons. Most of these items can be found, alternatives can be found, because they're made today out of plant-based material, compostable, and same thing for the straws. So it basically covers the whole range of things.
Okay, thank you. Did that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Mr. Fiden.
Anthony Fiden, Cold Spring Lane. I'd like to just hopefully cover a couple of points that haven't been covered yet. I know this is, when you're talking about the climate, it's an emotional issue for a lot of people. It's also, we're here to make a, we're rational people, and we're here to make a rational decision. So I think one of the questions we need to ask is, would this actually accomplish what the Climate Committee is saying it would accomplish? And I spoke to the Climate Committee more than a year ago and raised some questions. They've never been addressed. They've pretty much stuck to the same script of plastics are bad, all towns are doing this, and so we should do it. But the fact is that, when you look at the studies, the research that's out there, and it's actually building, this would not accomplish what they're saying it would accomplish. And that's becoming more and more clear, not with plastics industry people, but with environmentalists. And so I'm going to do something the Climate Committee did not do, and that's break some facts and some, just some headlines for you, based on research that I just picked up today, and I'll be very quick. Here's what it says, why a plastic bag ban could lead to unintended environmental consequences. That's from the Canadian Broadcasting Corp. Another headline, why banning plastic bags doesn't work as intended. The subhead is, benefits of bag regulations are mitigated by changes in consumer behavior. In other words, it takes something away, people are going to use something else, and what they use is plastic bags, they buy them at the store. Here's another one, the bag ban blunder. That's from the Cato Institute, about the most liberal think tank you could know. Here's another one, banning plastic bags is great for the world, right? Not so fast. The subhead is, advocates for plastic bag bans often neglect to ask what will replace plastic bags and what the environmental impact the replacement will be. That's from Wired.com, a liberal tech blog. Here's my favorite here, our plastic bag bans garbage. Now that is, you might think it's from Exxon Corp. or a plastic manufacturer, that's from National Public Radio, and that's just a very recent one. Now what they're saying is, they don't work. People, there's, the unintended consequences are, people are using other things, it's adding to the problem. Just a couple more. Why we should not ban plastic bags, plastic bag alternatives are not necessarily better. It's from GreenLiving.com. And here's, the final one is an important one. Despite pioneering ban, Kenya is drowning in single-use plastic. That's an important one, because Kenya probably has the most stringent plastic ban in the world. It did it maybe three years ago, and it's been an environmental disaster, because they did not, they banned what they called single-use plastics, but they didn't, they didn't account for people's behaviors, and they can't control everything. So it's really, you should see the pictures with this.
Wrap it up, please. Time.
Okay, I have one more point to make, and that's about how the Climate Committee brought this forward. I've tried to be quick, but it's important, Randy. The Climate Committee, as I said, they never address these issues, and they basically, they've been consistent saying the same thing. At their presentation, a couple of weeks ago, before the Select Board, I actually spoke in the comment period, made some of the same points, and then the committee got up there. And I just want you, I don't know how many people were able to hear that.
Do me a favor, please, stop now and get back in the line so you can, because you're already at four minutes.
I'm almost finished.
No, you're over, you're almost, you're at four minutes. You can get back in line and keep speaking, please.
Dana Friedman, 16 Barstow Lane. I'm, first of all, I'll just be upfront, I support this bill, and is this ban going to solve a climate change crisis? Of course not. But what it is going to do is it's going to make, take small, make a small difference in that there will be fewer bad plastic bags around. It's true, we do have a choice, but what I'm hearing from people who are against this bill, I'm not hearing any great solutions to this problem. I'm just hearing, I want to have a choice. I hope that's not a choice, I want to have a choice to throw my bags out on the side of the road. Yes, it's true that we can all change behavior. I know that I would like my town to be known as an environment, a town that cares about the environment, and I make choices too. When I go shopping, I go shopping at places that use environmentally friendly products. I would like to continue to do most of my shopping in Hadley, but if I know that Hadley businesses are going to deliberately not care about the environment, just because it's not going to solve every single climate change problem, and North Hampton and South Hadley and East Hampton are, that is where I'm going to do my shopping. Thank you.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think when...
Name and address, please.
Oh, Brian West, 203 Bay Road. When an article like this is put up, and it says "plastic bag ban," that's a little misleading, because everybody thinks of the plastic bag that you get at Walmart when you buy, you know, a pair of socks and a pair of underwear, right? That's what you think of. But let's stop and think about what comes into this town in a single-use plastic bag. How many people here burn wood pellets? What do they come in? It's a single-use plastic bag. And if you burn wood pellets, and we ban single-use plastic bags, where are you going to get your wood pellets? Because they're not shipping them from Canada down here in a cardboard box, okay? If you go and buy a bag of grass seed at Walmart, it comes in a single-use plastic bag, correct? A bag of lime, a bag of fertilizer. So if the issue is, we're worried about litter on the side of the road, and trust me, nobody sees more litter than me. I have to go walk the edge of the cornfield before we plant the cornfield. There's going to be Bud Light cans, there's going to be wine bottles, there'll be a Dunkin' Donuts cup, okay? So if we're talking about the single, if we're worried about the plastic bag from a store or a restaurant that somebody's carrying out, there's a lot of other single-use bags that we use every day that I believe would qualify under this.
Thank you. Mr. Fiden.
Okay, Anthony Fiden, Cold Spring Lane. Couple of points that haven't been brought up very much is that this is banning plastic straws. Plastic straws are used by a lot of people, including disabled people, who would have a very hard time if this came through. I know that the Climate Committee said, oh, they can just ask for them. We're going to make it harder for people who are elderly and disabled to actually go out in public. Another thing is that this has an added cost, and, you know, it would be, and right now we're having the worst inflation we've had in our lifetimes, and they're basically adding a tax to groceries, to all kinds of things. And I know at the Climate, at that presentation, the representative said, it's an easy transition, it's like a dollar, was her quote. That's not true at all. It's very, this can be very expensive, you have to buy bags, it's going to be added cost at restaurants, and it's going to add up. And for her to say it's only a dollar is really arrogant, because it's just, we shouldn't be taxing things at this time. And their presentation was quite interesting, and one of the quotes that they said was, I don't think, this is the Ms. Nelson, the spokesperson, I don't think people have a right to trash the planet, that's why we want this ban. And Ms. Nevin Smith said she doesn't litter, but she said, most people unfortunately litter. They also said it's pure laziness. It's, there were a lot of that kind of behavior. You're insulting the people of Hadley, we're not all litters, we're not here to trash the planet. This is an agricultural town, most of us grew up working on farms, and we managed to be stewards of the land for all this time. We don't need to be lectured by a committee on how to take care of the land, and we have the most protected land in the entire state, and yet here we are being lectured by this committee. My last quote from the, from the Ms. Nelson of the committee was, she got angry that Ms. Parsons was questioning, Ms. Parsons said, why shouldn't people have a choice? She said, and people, if that makes them mad, too bad. That's a quote from the Climate Committee. They're here, they're here to, they're supposed to be helping us evaluate an important issue, and that's their statement. If you don't like it, too bad. That's not, that's not in their mission statement, and that's, it's really, I don't see anybody who has any self-respect could vote for this.
Thank you.
These are not biodegradable, by the way. Erica Hollister, 225 South Middle Street. I just, I am supporting this because I think that communities all over the United States and all over the world are speaking up to say we want a sustainable world. We don't want the oceans to be filled with toxic chemicals, we don't want our food to be filled with the toxic chemicals that are being imbibed through the ocean water, through the rainwater, we don't want it in our soil, we don't want it in our children, we don't want it in our breast milk, we don't want it in our tissue. And I also just want to say that the more there is a demand for these biodegradable products, why wouldn't we want things to be biodegradable? Why would we want ultimately to be filling up the environment with plastics that don't biodegrade? Styrofoam takes 1,000 years to biodegrade. That means that it's just going to be cycling through our soil and our animals and our food for, basically forever. So don't ever use styrofoam, it's just a terrible, terrible thing. And just for us to be able to say to all those fast food restaurants on Route 9, please help us improve this situation, I think it's a good thing.
Michelle.
Michelle Morris Friedman, 45 Roosevelt Street. I want to speak to the point of plastic straws. I've worked for years with people with disabilities. There are a lot of places in the state and around the country that have plastic straw bans, but allow people to request straws stated publicly, because it is true, some people cannot drink without a straw or use a rigid straw. But that is written into the bylaws, so there is awareness of that issue. I wanted to also stress that we have a whole culture focused on comfort and convenience, and what that has done has, it has degraded the environment and created plastic pollution and climate change, which will not be comfortable or convenient in the future from this point on. I think this is a way to get people aware, on a day-to-day level, of the impacts of their actions. No, it is not perfect. The perfect thing would be to have industries that produce all these wares pay the environmental cost upfront, and not leave it to towns and individuals to deal with the environmental costs of the way we live. And I wanted to also say... way we live. And I wanted to also say that I've been to other towns with similar bans, businesses adjust, and in fact, new businesses develop, because there's commercial composting in some places that compost not just food waste, but also compostable plastics. And at the same time reduces what's put into the landfills. So if we create an environment where we're producing less plastic and we're living a little bit different, the economy could just catch up and sort of mold itself to the change in behavior.
Thank you.
Michelle Horowitz, 16 Barstow Lane. I want to correct some misinformation that I heard from some previous speakers. The ban specifically puts a thickness minimum, basically, unacceptable plastic bags. Nobody is going to put wood pellets in a bag that is not strong enough to hold them. The, I am not measured a wood pellet bag or a garden seed bag, or, but I certainly know that the bags we use to buy compost from Gardener Supply or other places is way thicker than that. Yeah, I mean, you know, you wouldn't, you don't want things falling out of the bottom of the bag, because the bag isn't strong enough, so you wouldn't package it that way. And also, as far as businesses adjusting, there is a profit case to be made for going green and doing it the right way. And interestingly enough, Walmart nationally is a leader in this. Walmart tells their suppliers, "No, we will not accept your stuff if it's wrapped in 17 layers of cardboard and plastic and plastic and cardboard and metal. Give us something that is much more eco-friendly." And because Walmart has that purchasing power, they do. And Walmart, the last time I checked, actually sells more organic food than Whole Foods. And the interesting thing is, they sell it to people who don't go to Whole Foods. So they've doubled the market, made a huge profit center for themselves. And I'm sure that businesses in Hadley will figure out ways to profit from doing the right thing and attracting customers and using that in their marketing.
Thank you. Mr. Thayer.
Rick Thayer, 179 Hockenham Road. Mr. Moderator, I'd like to call the question.
Okay. So we know the drill. Mr. Thayer's decided there's been enough talk about this, so we got to vote to stop the discussion. So all those in favor of calling the question? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, now we are going to vote on Article 19. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? This only requires a majority. Motion passes. Okay, Article 20 is about Old Mountain Road. Okay, so this move the town vote to rename Mountain Road from the Skinner State Park entrance southwesterly to the Hadley, South Hadley Town Line to Old Mountain Road. What's that? Oh, it would be, if you could please stay, I know the fund's all over, but it'd be nice to stay, if you could. Okay, anyhow, I read the motion. Do I have a motion? And a second. Okay, Mr. Waskevitz, please explain.
What we've been calling Mountain Road and Old Mountain Road, we just need to vote it in at town meeting here right now and make it official to name it Old Mountain Road. At one time, I believe it was Summit Road, all the way up to the Summit House at one time. And then they built some other houses around, I believe, and started a road, it's like a big horseshoe now. So, and it goes to the Hadley, South Hadley line.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion on this? Mr. Nyheart?
Tim Nyheart, 16 Closier Drive. Just a general question. What is stated under the E-911 system right now? Because if it, if it might require everybody to change everything. But do we know what it's under E-911?
No. Yeah, hang on one second. Chief Mason can answer that for you, I believe, whether he wants to or not.
Thank you.
So right, the reason that we're actually changing-
Excuse me, sir, who are you?
I'm sorry. Mike Mason, the Chief of Police. Uh, that's actually the reason that we're changing it, Tim, is because we're trying to make sure that everything matches right now. And 911 mapping is most, the most difficult thing to change. So what we want is just to make it what it actually is in the 911 mapping system. Everyone calls it Old Mountain Road. The sign says Old Mountain Road. I don't know that anybody, I mean, when I was trained as a police officer 20-plus years ago, I didn't know it as anything else. So we're just trying to make it match what everybody else calls it. And that's what the 911 mapping system calls it.
Thank you.
From the G up at Summit House Road, Angeles.
Yes, sir.
I'm Thomas McGee.
Take your mask off, please, so we can hear you. Thank you.
I'm Thomas McGee. I live on Old Mountain Road for 37 years. I would like to say, keep the sign up that says Old Mountain Road, because that's where I live. Thank you very much.
I think we're good, John, on that one. Any other discussion or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Article 21 is the acceptance of Megan's Way as a public way. Move the town vote to accept as a public way the roadway known as Megan's Way as heretofore laid out by the Select Board and shown on a plan of land entitled Hilltop Estates Definitive Subdivision Plan, Plan of Land in Hadley, Massachusetts, prepared for Thomas F. Quinlan Sr., dated March 11th, 2014, and recorded with the Hampshire Registry of Deeds in Plan Book 233, page 122, a copy of which is on file with the town clerk, and to authorize the Select Board to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain the fee in and to or, in and to and/or permanent easements to use said roadway for all purposes for which public ways are used in the town of Hadley, and any and all drainage, access, utility, and/or other easements incidental or related thereto. Have a motion and a second. Before Mr. Waskevitz explains, I just want to make something clear. My company surveyed this property, but as you can see, the plan was done in 2014. I have been paid, so I have no, no issue with the conflict here.
All right, unlike on Mountain Road, this road is brought up to the new rules and regulations with water, septic drainage, and, and all of that. And it's the request of this, of the owners of this subdivision, uh, that the town would take it over, and the road of the subdivision would now become part of the town of Hadley.
Thank you, John. Mr. Watley.
Kirk Watley, 133 Huntington Road. Um, a multi-leveled question, Mr. Moderator, to the proper person. Um, it's a dead-end road. It's right by where I live. Are, what kind of taxes are being paid to the town regarding the maintenance of the road there? And what additional costs does the town looking at for taking property control of that stretch of road? Does that make sense?
I understand the question, but I am not the one to answer it. Mr. Dwyer.
Oh, thank you, Bill.
Bill Dwyer, 388 River Drive, and a member of the Planning Board. Uh, this is actually maybe better directed to the assessors. I don't know if Dan is here, but Dan Zadonik and I had a discussion about this some time back. The town does not presently assess the road layout of a subdivision. So the road is producing no income to the town at this point.
Julie Rose, 128 Mount Warner Road. My question is, is this the intention that we would, if we took it by enment, enment, enment domain, or we had to pay for it, how much would it cost the town to do this? And if the developer did the road, provided the source services, established this community, why is it the responsibility of the town to take over the road as a public road and plow it and take care of it?
Okay, understood. Who, who would like to tackle that?
Jim Maximowski, 12 North Water Drive, Planning Board. And when a subdivision is applied for, it is the intention of virtually every subdivision in, applicant and the Planning Board that once the subdivision road has been completed and some houses are built on it, that the town take it over and maintain it. Um, like Mr. Dwyer says, there are no taxes being paid on the road, and the occupants that live on that street are paying town taxes, just like every other tax property in the town of Hadley. Their roads are being maintained by the town, and it is only fair that the subdivision road become a town property and built to subdivision standards, and that it also be maintained by the town. We have several old roads, subdivision roads in Hadley, where the owner or the original developers or owners of the road have basically absconded, for lack of, lack of a better word. We can't get in touch with them. We have no idea where they live. These roads are in limbo, and sometimes they're falling into a bit of disrepair. The town has no so-called legal authority to go in there and maintain them. But the people that live on the road are justifiably upset because nobody's taking care of my roads and it's falling into disrepair. We have since addressed subdivision standards that that can't happen anymore. But something that was built 10, 15, 20 years ago, I think there's about three or four roads in town where that has happened. And it's only fair that the people's roads be maintained by the town, because they're paying taxes.
Thank you.
Bill Dwyer, Planning Board. Um, if I could just clarify, the, the wording of the motion is very broad. And I just want to be sure, to be clear, that in this case, the developer is offering title to the roadway and to the drainage easements that go off that roadway to the town at no cost to the town. The town, in the future, will incur expenses in the upkeep, but the road has been brought up to town standards. Uh, we do have an email from the Acting Director of DPW that he is satisfied with the condition of the road, and the Planning Board did vote also to endorse 5-0.
Thank you.
Over the past few years, we have been going through some of the roads that have not been accepted. Holly Road was one of the ones that we had trouble with. We had an easement down the middle of the road. The road wasn't accepted. It wasn't given to us at the time. And we were going to pave over it, but again, we didn't have the authority, really, to maintain that road outside of the easement that we had for the sewer line when they built the sewer pump station down there for that area. So over the years now, over four or five years now, we've been trying to get these roads either up to date or turned over to the town. And they're being paid for through the taxation, through everyone, so...
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the last three articles are zoning articles. They require two-thirds vote to pass. Article 22 is special permit process. And what is the recommendation, if any, from the Planning Board on this?
Bill Dwyer, Planning Board. The Planning Board voted 5-0 to recommend town meeting adopt Article 22.
Okay, thank you. So the motion, move that the town amend the Hadley zoning bylaws as follows. Special permits amend Section 6.2.1.2 (parentheses, Board of Appeals) by deleting the current Section 6.2.1.2 and amend Section 6 by adding a new Section 6.5 and amend Section 1.2 definitions by adding a new definition as delineated in Article 22 of the annual town meeting warrant for May 5, 2022, and incorporated by reference herein.
So moved.
Good motion and a second.
Mr. Moderator, I move the waiving of the reading.
Motion and a second to waive the reading of this article. Any discussion on that? All those in favor? Thank you. Any, all those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Dwyer.
Uh, this is pretty, pretty simple despite the wording. We're basically just putting into one place the procedures to be followed when we are considering multiple, when both the zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board are considering special permits. And much of this is a paraphrase of state law, Chapter 40B. The reason we're putting it into the zoning bylaw at length is so that people can find the steps to take in one place and hopefully make it a more transparent process.
Thank you. Anybody want to ask a question or discuss this? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Article 23. Hang on, Jimmy. Is the energy storage system. And what's the Planning Board's recommendation on this?
The Planning Board makes a motion to indefinitely postpone this article.
And would you explain why, please?
Yes. Um, you want a second?
Okay, motion and a second.
This article was kind of drawn up in response to somebody that is applying for a battery storage facility in a town. And to be honest with you, it was drawn up pretty quickly. And when we had the public hearing, it just doesn't read very well. And so we're recommending that we postpone it, and we'll probably come back in the fall with a much better worded article.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Okay, Article 24. Signs on Public Property. What is the recommendation of the Planning Board on this one?
Planning Board recommends adoption 5 to 0.
Thank you. Move the town vote to amend Section 7 by creating a new subsection 7.10, signs on public property as delineated in Article 22. public property as delineated in Article 24 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant for May 5, 2022, and incorporated by reference herein.
So moved.
Motion and a second. Who's going to speak to this?
I will.
Okay, before, let's get a, make a motion to waive the reading.
Oh, motion to waive the reading of Article 24?
Yes. A motion and a second to waive the reading. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Max.
The Jim Maximowski, Planning Board. This article basically takes care of some, lack of a better term, things we've been doing right along between the selectmen and the building inspector and the planning board, but probably haven't been doing it quite properly. The, these are basically little signs like the, you know, "We buy houses, we pay cash for your car," so on and so forth, that you see posted on telephone poles all over town. And the building inspector has been removing them, and he's been having the, I believe, the DPW department remove them as well. However, nothing in zoning, there are signs on public property right now are not permitted by the zone bylaw, so they're being removed. But nothing says that the building inspector or the zone officer has the authority to remove them. Well, this article will now give the building inspector authority to permit them if he so, see, if they, if the building inspector sees fit, and to remove them when they aren't supposed to be there. The selectmen have been giving permission to various organizations, like when the Russell School Chain Link Fence was up, to put signs on the chain link fence. Well, that's town property. They're giving permission to put the sign on. However, nothing in the zone bylaw permits signs on public property. So, technically, that should have been happening. Now, obviously, that's kind of silly. We're not going to disagree with that. This article simply now gives the authority for those signs to be erected when it's proper.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions or concerns on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I think we don't have any more articles. So, hold on, we're not done yet. I can't just let you go. It's not even 10 o'clock. Thank you all for coming out and dealing with the situation. I appreciate everybody's respect for each other as far as the masks go. And I want to thank everybody for, who set up this venue, who are going to tear it down. They spend all kinds of time doing this, so they'll spend, I think it's the school people did this one. But anyhow, now I will accept the motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Have a good night, folks.